I'm ready to go.
Yeah.
I did not.
Sound check Dustin, you can hear me?
I can, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you.
All right.
Good. All right, I would like to bring the town council regular meeting for March 15, 2021 to order. Roll call please.
Ken Schoen?
President.
Leanne Mellon? Chuck Gardner?
President.
Steve Tulowitzki?
President, virtually.
Thank you, and President Kulturitis.
President. All right, please stand for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. That brings us on to proclamation is for the Greek independence proclamation I will be reading that. It is an honor for the independence of Greece, which is actually on March 25th, but we will not have a meeting. This is a close meeting to that date. Recognizing the bicentennial independence of Greece and celebrating democracy in Greece and the United States. Proclamation, whereas the people of ancient Greece developed the concept of democracy, which is free power to govern was vested in the people. And whereas the founding fathers of the United States, many of whom read Greek political philosophy in the original Greek language, drew heavily on the political experience and philosophy of the ancient Greece, informing the representative democracy of the United States. Whereas Petrow Milashis, the former commander of chief in Greece and the founder of the modern Greek state, said to the citizens of the United States in 1821, "It is your land that liberty has fixed her abode, and in imitating you, we shall imitate our ancestors and be thought worthy of them if we succeed in resembling you." Whereas, in an October 21st, 1823 letter to the Greek scholar, Adi Notus Correias, discussing the ongoing Greek struggle for independence, Thomas Jefferson wrote that, "No people sympathize more feelings than ours with the suffering of your countrymen than the more sincere and hardened prayers to the heavens of their success." And whereas on January 19th, 1824, a speech in the support of his resolution to send an American envoy to Greece amid its struggle for independence, then Congressman Daniel Webster recognized the struggle of an interesting and countenpeople, contending against fearful odds forbearing for the common privilege of human nature. And whereas individuals, American fellowins, including future abolitionist Dr. Samuel Gridley, how future abolitionist Jonathan Peckman Miller and George Jarvis struggled to Greece to fight alongside and provide aid to the Greek people in their struggle for their independence. And whereas the people of the United States generously offered humanitarian assistance to the people of Greece during their struggles for independence. And whereas Greece heroically resisted the Axis forces at a crucial moment in World War II, forcing Adolf Hitler to change his timeline and delaying the attacks on Russia. And whereas Winston Churchill said, "There has not been the virtue and the courage of the Greeks. We do not know which of the outcomes of World War II would have been." And no longer will we say that Greeks fight like heroes, but Greeks fight like Greeks. And whereas, 100,000 people of Greece were killed during World War II. And whereas, Greece consistently allied with the United States in the major international conflicts throughout its history and as a modern state. And whereas the governments and the people of Greece and the United States are at the forefront of efforts to advance freedom, democracy, peace, stability, and human rights. And whereas those efforts and similar ideals have forged a close bond between the people of Greece and the United States. And whereas it is proper desirable for the United States to celebrate March 25th, 2021 as a bicentennial of Greek independence day for the people of Greece to reform the democratic principles for which those two countries were founded. Now, therefore, please join the town of Muster, Indiana, recognize bicentennial independence of Greece and celebrate the democracy in Greece and the United States on this 15th day, March 2021.
Mr. President, I will make a motion to accept the proclamation, recognizing the bicentennial independence of Greece and celebrating democracy in Greece and the United States.
Is there a second?
I second it.
You're a roll call.
Are you saying yes?
No.
Yeah?
No. I don't think we should do that. I did not bring any oozles, so I'm sorry. That's right, you should have, you're right.
At least we got a little less than we were.
Tommy back in the day, sir.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
I'm sorry, President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five to zero to accept the Greek proclamation.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to open to the public. Person, public comments is limited to two minutes maximum per person and five minutes for group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policies. Chair is so described, may recognize individuals wishing to speak on different topics at any time in the open to the public session. Also, these will be timed by the clerk treasurer. This portion of the meeting shall not exceed 20 minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to speak tonight? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Buzz Seidel. I reside at 1641 Oakwood Court, Munster, Indiana. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm also the American Legion Commander here at Post 16. Today is our birthday, we are 102 years old.
Congratulations.
Thank you. This July, Munster Post 16 will also be 102 years old. So we've got quite the heritage. I'm very proud of our membership and proud of my country. My oath is never expired. I don't plan on it expiring. When I come tonight, Town of Munster has been very gracious to allow us to have Room B as a meeting. And Lake County is now in the 0.5 metric, where we can have 250 people meeting. And I would request or ask if we could get back into Room B to conduct our meetings. We generally have 10 to 12 people at each meeting. I can assure you that most of our old timers like me, except for Carl, who was Desert Storm combat veteran. But we've all been, had two vaccines. We've been going to different places. We have rented the community center out for about three or four months. And we practice social distancing. We have masks and my request for the council to to consider would allow us back into Room B. We meet on the second Tuesday of each month from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
I want to take that into consideration. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak tonight?
My name is Carl Blue. I reside at 10257 Harbor Lake. Basically, I'll go with the commander's request. I will be the commander coming up in July. We are a complete nonprofit and completely community-based service organization. So all the money that we have to spend out for alternate meeting rooms is opportunity lost for being able to support veterans and causes in the town of Munster.
Losing order, thank you Carl. Thank you for your service. Anybody else wish to speak tonight? Anybody online? Do we get any email from anybody this week?
We did not.
All right, I will close the open to the public. That brings us down to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I will, we accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second? I will second that motion. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Yes, and President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Yes, five zero on the consent agenda.
Thank you. There's nothing under old business that moves us into new business. Paperless billing, invoice cloud agreement.
That is something back in July, we approved paperless billing through PayGov for upgrading our software. And we believe that invoice cloud can give us a better product that will integrate well into the VSNA software. And so we're bringing it before you to enter into an agreement with invoice cloud for the payment of utility bill.
I will make a motion that we accept the agreement between invoice cloud for online payment of water utility billing, paperless billing. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
This is Steve, just was noticing the $2.75 transaction fee for using credit card. I know that we can also do ACH, which is cost-free. But I was curious how that related to other charges that we charge. For parks and rec, I think there's also a convenience fee. I was just curious if that's the same number, or maybe what's the rationale behind that?
Parks and recs have a slightly different credit card payment system and their fee is part of their license agreement. So you're comparing apples and oranges there.
Okay.
And the costs that the town is currently incurring exceeds about $35,000 a year. It's a significant amount of money that we spend in credit card fees. And so this is a way of passing it on, not passing it on, but the people that choose to use that feature, then will pay the convenience fee for it. And it is under the limit that Indiana code lets us have. And it's the fee that the invoice cloud charges us.
And when we're still going to continue to accept ACH?
100%, yes, there will be free options for people. This isn't the only way. You can do paperless and ACH. So you don't have to, you know, they're two separate actions.
I think this is primarily for people like to get points for all the bills that they get during the year, so.
Right. Okay, and that $35,000 a year, that's all from water bills?
It's from water bills, yes.
Wow, okay.
Significantly over the last five years.
Okay, I'm glad we offered the ACH. That was my only question here. I think this is, looks like a good solution.
Thank you, Steve.
We don't only offer ACH, you can mail it in, you can drop it off in the red box in the parking lot. And we do have two customer service clerks up there, deputy clerks that can take your payments. So there are plenty of options for people.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Votes yes, and President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Votes yes, five to zero to enter the agreement with invoice cloud. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Maple Leaf Crossing LLC Fourth Amendment to Development Agreement.
This is the Fourth Amendment of the development agreement between Maple Leaf Crossing LLC and the town. You'll see the same amendment and the redevelopment commission's agenda. This is only to move some dates for commencement of construction and completion of construction. There is no financial terms being discussed here at all, just dates. And again, these are primarily the result of profoundly delayed work conditions imposed last year and the backlog once real estate professionals and the county employees were allowed back to work.
Thank you, Dustin. Is there a motion? I will make a motion that we adopt the Fourth Amendment to the development agreement between the town of Munster and Maple Leaf Crossing.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
I have seen some underground work being performed out of Maple Leaf in that area in the last couple of months and certainly look forward to the shell of the buildings taking place earlier this, or later this spring.
I, I can, I have, I'm Jay with Maple Leaf Crossing. I just, this latest renderings of our building that's being drawn.
So my question would be, does it develop any building pictures that we can look at?
Yeah. This is our building, this is the building we're currently drawing.
Thank you.
It has a site plan and color. It's a limestone. We've been working hard through the winter.
Now, what direction are we looking in to see this?
That the right side is Hammond Avenue.
This face is the tracks, sir.
No, it's Pepsi, it's north.
Okay.
Yeah, you're looking north, northwest.
We've been drawing that field dinner, we should have it in front of the town councils within a month. Where to go? It's all Indiana limestone and that horizontal pattern is cut like it should be maintained with the grooves in it. It just doesn't show so well on the rendering, but it'd be cool.
It looks nice, very nice, Jack.
Okay.
Thank you, Jack. All right. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki? Counselor Tulowitzki?
Sorry, yes, off of mute.
Thank you, folks, yes. And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Yes, five to zero.
That brings us to Tesco Associates Inc. Hammond Avenue Bike and Pedestrian Bridge proposal.
Yeah, so the city of Hammond has a very exciting construction project that they are looking to construct in the near future. They have sought funding and received funding from the Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission and had also invited the town to have that conversation. After speaking with some members of council, there was a little, you know, it's hard to spend money on something you can't see. And we have a very capable planning and architecture firm working for us right now through the streetscape. For those of us here in Town Hall, along the walls of Town Hall, you can give public comment on the last public presentation. So we've done significant work about the corridor being considered here, kind of our front door to the community. And to Hammond's credit, they were very open to working with this firm if we paid for it. So it's out of their current scope, but the idea is that this bridge that would span Calumet Avenue on the very lovely Calumet River Trail, that's the first thing you see when you come off the highway, when you enter both Hammond and Munster. And we thought it would look really good. It's a great opportunity to kind of frame our communities. And I would suggest to council, you authorize this piece of work. It will allow Tesco to work with the city of Hammond, the little cow in the town, to put together three proposals that we all like. And then when those renderings are available, then council can have a more intentional conversation about whether or not you'd like to contribute to this regional resource. So this is the first step. It doesn't commit us to anything other than the cost to design the architectural enhancements to that structure.
Thank you, Dustin. I will make a motion that we authorize the town manager to enter into the agreement with Tesco Associates for aesthetic design treatments for the proposed bridge and pedestrian bridge over Calumet Avenue for a cost not to exceed $12,200.
Is there a second? A second?
Any discussion?
My only comment would be, I'd like to thank the city of Hammond for including us into this process because again, this is certainly going to be a gateway to the town of Munster on Calumet Avenue. Certainly, the recreational benefits of the bridge are endless. That's a very dangerous spot for bicycles be crossing. But at the same time, to include us in the aesthetics, I really do appreciate that.
How close will the bridge be to the
The bridge, I don't know how many linear feet from the traffic signal, but it's pretty close. It's so close that the kind of underbridge lighting that they've typically done in other of the bridges has to get cleared by indat because it could confuse a driver with the traffic signal. So, pretty close, pretty close. But you're going over it. I think the clearance is 18.6. So it's a significant bridge. It's a significant bridge. They have structural drives. And what we're doing right now is we're talking about how it could look as completed, right?
I would also like to express support of this work from Tesco. This is a great opportunity to, it's right in the spot where the streetscape has been planned and one of the potential pilot areas. So I'm grateful that we can have the same design firm look at the bridge and the other work we're doing in this spot.
All right. Thank you. Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Votes yes, and President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Votes yes.
Thank you. I think this is a really, really cool project. And I'd like to thank the mayor of Hammond for thinking to reach out to us on this. This is a really good collaboration opportunity.
All right, that brings us to Public Works Solid Waste Collecting Bids. Fun topic.
Yeah, not the feel-good story that the bridge is, but, but.
But it's needed.
But it's needed. And I think we have some great bid responses. And as you know, council knows. So the town of Munster has waste management as our solid waste and recycling provider. This is the third year of the contract. That contract expires in May. And in that original contract, the town had two one-year renewal options with waste management. Waste management came to us, to their credit professionals, said, hey, we are not going to renew. We're not interested in doing the work in Munster at the price we agreed to three years ago. We like working with you, but we think that you should go out to bid. And if we get the lowest bid, we'd love to continue working with you. So that's what we did. We went out to bid. And they were not the lowest bid, they were the highest bid. So we had three responsive and responsible bids. Waste Management Republic Services and Homewood Disposal Service. This evening, we're recommending contracting with Homewood Disposal Service. Did track down some communities of similar size and the reviews on their service was exceptional. They have committed to keep the service schedule that we currently have. So as a resident, this is exactly what you want to hear. What do I have to do? You're changing trash on me. This is crazy. It's not crazy. If your trash day is on a Friday, stays a Friday. If recycling day is on a yellow, it stays on a yellow. Now, we're not probably going to use green and yellow because Homewood Disposal's colors aren't green and yellow. But again, to Homewood Disposal's credit, they are working with waste management to purchase those bins. Because otherwise, those bins would be taken by waste management in landfill. So we're avoiding a significant landfill event. And you get to keep your bin, you get to keep your trash day, your trash bill will go up. That will be in a subsequent ordinance that you'll see probably within a month. But tonight, I am pleased to let you know that Homewood Disposal is a responsible and responsive bidder at 1845 in year one.
I will make a motion that the town council should approve the bid that is the bids from Homewood Disposal at the rates in year one, 1845, and increasing at a yearly increase of 4% with options for year four and five.
A second. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I believe there is a representative of Homewood Disposal here. If you'd like to ask any direct questions or if they'd like the opportunity to say anything.
Say something.
Yeah.
While he's walking up here, Dustin, they met all the bid specifications that we had.
Yes, sir.
And, and what is the mechanism? And maybe this can be addressed by the representative from Homewood Disposal for quality control throughout the term of the contract.
Sure.
Hi, good evening, Frank Hilligans, municipal manager, Homewood Disposal. And we're excited to be here. And we're excited to incorporate Munster and our family communities. We help 35 communities over 150,000 homes. This is, this is an exciting time for us. I do want to mirror, you know, the professionalism that you saw from your current supplier. Knowing the timeframe, COVID, manufacturing, potential delays, and them working with us to keep the cards in place. It's not common. And, you know, we thank them and, you know, they're still not cheap. You know, they're only five years old. We still consider the cards relatively new. Residents are custom their cards, their day of collection, their time of collection. We're going to try to mirror all that as best as we can. To your question as far as maintaining quality control. Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we pushed in Munster is that all our trucks are less than three years old. We have a new truck coming at the end of the month. It's scheduled to be here. We have told the town of Munster that they're going to get a brand-new truck. It's a good thing. I mean, a lot of trucks, you look in their inventory list of 2012s or 2011s or 2013s, your old truck will be a 2019. So, you know, we're going to give everything we got to the town of Munster to prove our worth to you. And we're looking forward to a long-term relationship with the town of Munster. So on the day-to-day contact, we're going to have two supervisors out here in May first. We'll have extra trucks out here in May first. We got a whole implementation plan. We've offered to do mailers to the residents. I've learned over my 27 years of experience, a colored postcard, residents can see, mailed to every house. This is what's going to happen. But it's not going to have to say a lot because we're just telling them nothing is changing. But we do want to let them know, you know, this is the program moving forward. But really, nothing's changing. They, we want to let them know that their current day is staying the same. Their AB week is not changing for recycling. This is working out to be for the short timeframe around for a main one start. This is probably the best case scenario. So, yeah, that's all my thoughts.
I think to your point, if you're asking, you know, on a day-to-day, hey, there's, you missed a pickup. There's trash in the road, that kind of quality of life, quality control. The contract specifies that there's going to be a point person for each community. And if it's anything like waste management, and I have no doubt based on our experience with Homewood Disposal and the bid process and leading up to this, that they're going to be as or more responsive. There's a relationship between Public Works, that account manager, and that becomes seamless.
I appreciate it. Again, just the thought process to that is appreciated. That's been considered, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, Frank. This is Steve. Just wanted to make the comment that I had received communication in the past month or so from at least one resident stating that they were supportive of staying with waste management. You know, and as we know, we need to take whichever bid is the responsible and responsive bid with the lowest price. And, you know, just to point out, the current price to the new bid for waste management is a 46% increase. And they did come out considerably higher than Homewood Disposal Service. So that's the rationale behind this decision and excited to start a new relationship.
And I personally say that I've been using this gentleman's company for years in my business without a shadow. So they're very responsive, so. All right, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Votes yes, and President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Oh, here we go. Next, we have town utility cost of service study.
Yes, sir. Let me pull the memo up for the folks watching at home. This is a topic that you heard me talk about already many times. I will talk about it more and more and more until you inhale and sigh deeply every time. So right now, I'm going to set the stage. There's a number of things happening, right? So we have So, uh, we have just gone through a wholesale water uh negotiation with the city of Hammond and four other communities. Uh, we'll have to adjust our rates for the wholesale water uh that we receive from the city of Hammond. Uh, that price is going from fifty-three cents per a thousand gallons to ninety-five cents. That forty-two cent difference only gets the water to the town line. It only gets the water to the town line. So that increase in price that our residents are gonna see uh probably in, in about two to three months is only for the water to the town line. Now, the town of Munster is responsible from getting that water from the town line to your businesses, to your homes, to your pools, to your sinks, to your tubs. That's our cost. Uh, and our cost right now for the first uh five thousand gallons is uh three dollars and thirteen cents per gallon, right? That I would say uh in this company is insufficient to the demands of the system. In two thousand twenty-one, we've had over twenty water main breaks. That ain't right. And this isn't a, a you council problem. This isn't a Dustin problem. This is the culmination of decades and decades and decades and decades of uh underfunding the, the utility. And the, that's, that's the bad news. Uh, the good news is you're in good company, cause I would say the vast, vast majority of municipalities in America have done the exact same thing. And it doesn't take a, a, a lot of sleuthing around to look at what the catastrophic effects of infrastructure failure are. What we have before us here is a, a cost of service study uh that would examine not only our water, but our sanitary sewer and our storm sewer. And I'm proposing to look at all three because concurrently, the town in conjunction with the city of Hammond is working with the wholesale communities for the Hammond Sanitary District. Now, that consultant is gonna be working with uh the sanitary district, which is Hammond and Munster, and the wholesale communities of Highland Griffin and Whiting. Uh, what that means is that uh group of professionals is gonna be deep in the weeds in the town of Munster operations and data. And the thought is that uh if someone is doing that heavy lift right now for one utility, we could probably find some cost savings if they were to look at the other utilities in town. Uh, when I was scoping this workout earlier in the year, a comprehensive cost of service study for each of those three utilities had a cumulative price. You know, it, it wasn't a formal bid. I was talking to professionals in the field. And I was getting numbers like ninety-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that range. So, so a real significant price. Uh, when I reached out to uh this firm, New Gen Strategies and Solutions, the firm that's working with the town on the cost of service study for the wholesale rate for sanitary sewer. So what would it cost just to throw this work in, since you're already under the hood? What, what if we put in a couple other things? And they came in at a price of just over fifty-five thousand dollars. So, uh, that hypothesis did pay off. We're gonna save a, a significant amount of money. The more important than the savings is the work that they're gonna do and the results that we're gonna bring to you to consider. And that will be a cost-based rate uh for the uh management operations of these utilities, both for water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer. Uh, I can't overstate the importance of this. Uh, I feel very strongly about it. Uh, and I look forward to uh bringing you some fact-based cost numbers uh on these utilities.
Thank you, Dustin. I will move to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with New Gen Strategies and Solutions to conduct a cost-of-service-based rate study for the town's water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer systems for a cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I definitely believe that we should move forward with this, just so that we can get a full grasp of yeah, what's expected. Definitely piggybacking with the hammer. This does make a lot of sense, Dustin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to uh commend our staff here for really pushing this study to us. It's not as, as pretty as the pictures that we see in the hallway now with the street tape program, but it's certainly as important that we look at, at what these rates really are and what the cost of this service really is. So, uh, thank you for doing this work.
Yeah, I would second that sentiment. This sort of investment is something that can't really it, it is really catastrophic. And the way that Dustin put it, twenty water main breaks um already this year is those, those, those numbers are not going to go down. Um, so I think now, even though this may be a difficult thing to swallow at some point in the future, we, by doing this study, we will have a very accurate view of what it will take to get us back to uh where our infrastructure needs to be.
Any comments? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Votes yes, and President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five to zero.
That brings us down to outside counsel for utility rates.
Yeah, so this is kind of a, uh, an accessory uh to the cost of service work that I, I suggested in the, in the previous memo. Uh, thi- this is really complex stuff. There, there, there's a whole, there's a whole practice here. And this is an opportunity to kind of measure twice and, and cut once. So, I, I don't anticipate a heavy lift from Denton's Bingham and Greenbaum, but they did a phenomenal job for the town while we were working uh with them on the, on the water issue. They, they helped bring that to a, a collegial solution, I think, that all parties are, are happy with. And I was uh more impressed with their depth of knowledge uh with utility rate work and their expertise about the I U R C. So I would like the opportunity to just uh be able to consult with them uh as need be. Uh, so their rates range, uh, you know, depending on the staff person uh or the professional uh between two hundred and forty and seven hundred and eighty-five per hour. And like I said, I don't anticipate a ton of work and this is not for litigation purposes. This is just to consult. So, at your pleasure, uh, there's the recommendation.
I would move to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with Denton's Bingham and Greenbaum to provide advice in connection with the cost of services studies, as well as on matters concerning the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission.
I will second that motion. Any question? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Votes yes, and President Kulturitis?
Yes. Alright, spring is in the air. Public Works, who is on twenty-one Lake Pond and Ditch Maintenance Program for Acquired Vegetation.
It's that time of year again.
That time of year. I will make a motion to approve an offer proposal number two nine four seven eight two from Aquatic Control for the twenty-twenty-one custom vegetation management program for a cost of twenty thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents if we are, if we pay it by April first, two thousand twenty-one.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Alright, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Votes yes, and President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Brings us down to ordinance eighteen nineteen, amending scheduled pay police fees.
So, starting uh last year, police departments started looking uh at other communities buying some fees. Uh, working with the clerk treasurer's office, we came up with uh a way to kind of capture fees. We weren't capturing legally and of course reducing some fees in some areas. When we started looking at it compared to other communities, we saw that our moving violations were higher than any other community. So we actually lowered the fines for moving violation. Conversely, if you look at our uh animal control, as you know, we had to enter an agreement with Highland. And we are charged for each stray animal. We've never captured any cost for housing that animal and reuniting it with its owner, which seems to be customary even with the main society. So this way, we're able to recoup some of our losses uh from entering into the agreement with Highland for the use of their shelter. So I think all in all, it's pretty much in line with other communities and within the guidelines of state.
Thank you, chief. I will make a motion that we adopt ordinance eighteen nineteen on first reading and set second reading for the next scheduled town council meeting at, which is, I believe, the first Monday in April. Or second.
I'll second the motion.
Alright. Chief, when you mentioned uh surrounding communities, would you say four to six communities that you looked at?
Easily, yes.
And, and these fees do not um affect the Freedom of Information Act request that you get for copying or anything like that, right? These are, these are separate than those.
Yeah, they're, they're public record in any community.
Okay.
Oh, don't we?
First, alright. Good, you're right. Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Votes yes, and President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five to zero. We'll hear this on second read in April.
Okay. Next is ordinance ordinance eighteen twenty, budget transfer.
Um, this is something that we come to you every year with. We adopted a budget back in the fall. State comes back with a certified budget. Um, and then there's some adjustments that have to be made within each, each fund. Uh, that's in essence what this ordinance is doing. It's approving those transfers that have to happen and accepting the certified budget. Some things of note, the general fund was cut by over one point three million dollars from what staff asked for, not the pie in the sky number we asked for, what staff asked for. So it's a major hit that the fund is taking. Um, and then one of the main ways we are recouping that or dealing with that is we are moving about a million dollars worth of payroll from the police department into that L I T fund. Now, that'll work for this year, but it is going to severely deplete that fund going into twenty twenty-two. Uh, so this is not a long-term solution, uh, but it will get us through the year. Uh, there's a similar cut hitting the uh motor vehicle highway fund. We're able to transfer those expenses into another fund uh to help cover that. But again, I don't see that as a long-term solution. So I'm gonna make my pitch here. I know that there's money coming from the stimulus package and there's thoughts about where it's going to be going. And if there is any way to help use this to offset lost revenues to help us get us through next year, that would be wonderful. It's not, I'm not looking for every penny of it, but we still need to prepare for these officers. We're asking for first read on this ordinance and then have final adoption at the next meeting.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll make the motion to hear ordinance eighteen twenty on first reading and schedule a second reading uh and adoption for April fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second? Roll call. I, I got a question. Is it safe to say that the reduction from what the state is telling us is, is a reflection of the COVID um situation of less tax money coming into the state? Or, or i- is, is there any correlation to the pandemic and this reduction?
I wouldn't say that it's dollar for dollar, but we are seeing, I would, the we had to put more money into the park fund because their, their revenues were so drastically reduced last year. And the way the tax levy works, if you pull it out, if you wanna give more to the park fund, you gotta take it from someplace else. And it was taken from the general fund and the M V H fund. So, in a way, yes. Um, but it's not a dollar-for-dollar thing necessarily. M V H fund did take a hit last year in its revenues because of COVID, because its primary source of revenue is generated by the gasoline tax. And when no one's driving, there's no, but those dollars got reduced.
So there's some correlation, but not, not all of, okay.
It's not a hundred percent there, but it is, it definitely did hit it. And the L I T fund, which we're leaning on this year, has money because of how it gets funded. It will feel the hit from COVID next year. Because nobody, because so many people were on unemployment last year, income was down. We're going to pay those income taxes this year and then we would get that money next year. So we're usually government two years behind on any kind of economic hit.
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
So just, just to build on Ms. Abbott's point, uh, there's no hard guidance from treasury yet, but the consensus is that there'll be bins of appropriate funding. Uh, so it's not, no strings attached. Revenue replacement is definitely one of the appropriate bins. Uh, salaries for COVID response is another. Uh, so that would be based on all information that I've received from both AIM, I C M A and other professionals, a legitimate use of these funds.
May I ask a question?
Sure, can I?
Of Ms. Abbott. Um, so there, it looks like about a two-point-one million reduction in just the motor vehicle highway and the general fund. And um you said this wouldn't be a long-term solution to use um A R P funds next year, but we, you know, might be why, would be wise to do that? Do you have any initial guidance on what a long-term solution might look like?
When, I, I just wanna make a clarification. The, when I said it's not a long-term solution, I meant using the L I T fund to pay police payroll.
Correct.
That, I mean by not a, a long-term solution. And, and the stimulus money, that's not a long-term solution either. It, it's something that we, as a community, have to figure out. How will we long-term pay police and fire? And when we talk about moving property tax dollars, where is the priority? Uh, that, that's something that has to be discussed and decided so that the dollars go where the council wants them to go.
And, and do we expect, Ms. Abbott, that as the economy, if, when the economy returns, that the level of funding will return along with that, or?
When you talk about the L I T funds, and just to clarify, L I T stands for local income tax.
Right.
Yes, we anticipate that this year will, will probably be okay in L I T, which is what lets us use this solution. But in twenty twenty-two, we'll take the hit because of how the timing of when that funding happens. Then, yes, as the economy gets better, people get back to work, they start earning money and they start paying those local income tax dollars again. Then hopefully in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we'll see that come back up.
And I, I was uh, uh, also kind of more focused on the general, the general fund, the one point three-five that we've seen go away. Do we expect that to also come back, or we need some other solution we need to figure out in the next year or two?
Some other solution. Um, general fund is primarily funded through property tax dollars. Um, it does get some miscellaneous revenues. It does not get any income tax dollars. Um, and the um general fund is primarily supporting police and fire. So it's that age-old problem. It, 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 those two consume the budget. Um, and it has these more limited revenue sources.
And if that's property tax, do we know what's driven the D L G F's decision to drop the one point three-five lower than we had requested?
So when, when we request, we request for every penny we can actually get, knowing that we can't get every possible penny. They come back and we have a certain amount of levy we can get. And there's a time period where we are informed how much, once the calculations are made. And then it's decided where will those, that the cuts that have to happen, what funds will take those cuts? And you, and it's generally divided among general fund, M V H and park. It can also go, you, you could, if you wanted to, cut some other things, but you're not probably gonna want to cut your debt service. That's where, when I say knowing what the priorities are, knowing what council wants, what direction they want, that's where we say, okay, we're gonna let one fund have more property tax dollars than another.
Got it.
So this year, uh, just to summarize, parks had a terrible revenue last, year, last year. Because they couldn't have any events. The Billy Casper revenue, usually we're running just in the red. We thought maybe last year they'd actually be in the black. Uh, that did not happen uh with the uh banquet. That did not happen with the banquet syst- uh, si- situation that, that it was. So, to, to backstop the, the, the park fund, there's, you know, there's only so much pie, and you can allocate it. So, that's what we're, we're talking about. Because it, it, it's unfortunately, three pounds of flour in a five-pound sack. You, you, you gotta bake a bunch of cakes, and you don't have enough ingredients. And every year, it's gonna get a little harder because more properties are gonna hit the tax caps. I think that, that's the reality. Maybe the economy booms again, and, you know, in two years, we have that LIT fund back. But the fact of the matter is, every year, more and more properties will hit that cap. So, the, the, the name of the game is to increase our assessed value slowly and surely over time. And there's no easy solutions. There, there's no silver bullets here.
But development helps. So, thank you for allowing this conversation to go deep and for the information, Ms. Abbott. Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Both yes, and President Kulturitis?
Yes.
That brings us down to ordinance eighteen twenty-one, fifty-fifty sidewalk replacement program.
I am, uh, looking forward to bringing this to your consideration. For many, many, many years, the town had a fifty-fifty sidewalk program that allowed, yes, yes, that, that allowed residents in the town to collaborate on the resident responsibility to maintain their sidewalks. For a period of time, that program was suspended, and we would like to bring it back. We have two hundred and thirty-two miles of sidewalk in the town of Munster. And we have worked as a team, very, very pleased with how we came together as a multidisciplinary approach a- a- and came up with this proposal to you here at council. The gist of it is that if a sidewalk is improved in the town of Munster, the cost is split. So, we can go out into our highest-rated trip hazards for safety. We can go and say, okay, some will be mandatory, others will be voluntary, right? So, if your sidewalk, we have a sidewalk condition index. So, say my sidewalk is bad, but certainly not an imminent threat to life and limb. I can apply to have my sidewalk improved and, and then say, you know what? While I'm at it, I've got these other panels too that are also bad, not, not imminent. I can have those improved as well. And then, well, I got a concrete contractor. I got a private drive myself. Well, town's not gonna participate with that. But our, our contractor, J.J. Newell, has agreed to allow those residents to use our commodity prices. So, not only are we helping the resident with the responsibility of maintaining their sidewalk, not only are we gonna effectively double the amount of sidewalks we can fix in a year, we're also going to unlock that potential to private investment through our contractor, whichever contractor that is. And this year, we, we're, we're gonna suggest is continue as J.J. Newell, since they're calling their prices stable. So, I think this is a, a really exciting proposal. You know, one of the things that I hear a lot of concern, a- and I wouldn't say complaint, but a lot of feedback from residents is, I want sidewalks. I want sidewalks improved. We have a lot of new families turning over into the community, and this is gonna meet that need, a, a portion of that need. We're gonna continue to work on finding a solution to bring sidewalks where they're not here currently. That is a, that is a very known need, and it's a program that we're working on. It's not ready for primetime yet. But this is, th- this addresses a portion of that. So, happy to have any conversation you like. This is a draft. So, this is, there, there's nothing protective about this. If there's things that you'd like to see, we're happy to incorporate it. So, just, just really pleased about the work that we did as a staff together on this.
So, this is first reading. What is the ordinance number for this eighteen twenty-one? First read. And I will make a motion that we pass or that we make the ordinance to consider ordinance eighteen twenty-one on first read and set the second reading for April fifth for the sidewalk replacement program, fifty-fifty sidewalk replacement program. There are second.
I'll second that.
Right. Mr. Anderson, you, you gave us a scenario where the homeowner would like his, his or her sidewalk replaced. What happens when we say that a sidewalk needs to be replaced, and the homeowner doesn't want to pay fifty-fifty?
They pay fifty-fifty.
There, this is a strong enough ordinance that that is. And is there any kind of, um, if the resident comes back and says, oh, there are sidewalks worse than mine, and is there any way to, for that resident to come and, in a way, I don't know, protest or, or have some type of conversation other than us just saying it's going to get done? If there's some type of remonstrance period that he can, he or she can look at? And at least have a discussion about why, you know, why that sidewalk is a bad sidewalk?
Sure. We can, we can work on some appeal language. Absolutely. I, I, I should also say that if it is a mandatory, that we, that can be billed in installments, we're, we're, we're not gonna send the sidewalk police to you and shake, shake your couch cushions. You, you can, you can chunk that out into manageable payments within that year. But no, point well taken, perhaps an, an appeal process. The reason, and there, there was discussion about that, you know, in, in cases where it, it might be difficult to do. But what you get, the, the scenario that I would be concerned of is if I can hold out long enough, and I'll make the town just, I'll just break the town, and they'll just do it, then there's no incentive to, to participate, right? Then we're back to what we're doing right now, is taking care of private property, in essence, and doing it inefficiently because we're only doing half of what we could be doing.
And I think, from what it sounds like, the review that has been done with the sidewalks is an extensive review, and it's a review that we can, that, that holds up to some, some people looking at it. And we have confidence in what we've looked at, that we're only taking the worst of the worst for repairs.
Right.
So, okay.
No, but, no, absolutely. And that's, that's a, a wise suggestion. We should have some kind of appeal or remonstrance process, for sure.
Well, the other thing too, since you brought it up, is if we're actually tracking which ones are the worst ones, is there a way to actually kind of send out something for like the next year's? You know, he was just wanting to hint out there, by the way, this is looking pretty badly, maybe looking at doing this next year.
Possibly. I'd have to talk with staff about the feasibility of saying with any specificity. I think, in theory, I think that's a really good idea. It's certainly worth looking into.
I'm just saying, that way someone can budget and say, hey, you know what? I'm not getting deemed this year, but I know they're gonna start knocking on my door possibly next year, because this is.
Yeah. I can definitely see a scenario where we could easily say, okay, we, we rank you as like the worst possible. Maybe we won't get to you this year, but.
We ranked the roads everywhere, you know?
Yeah.
Same thing with the, with the sidewalks.
No, that's a good idea.
I, one other person with regards to, I know a couple of years, the sidewalks in front of my house got grounded down. You know, the edge got grounded and things like that. Are we still doing that? Or is that a, I would imagine, and I think this was five or six years ago, my sidewalk was coming up by my silver maple tree, and it was ground down, and I would, I would think it was the town did it. Are we still doing that project and process, and is that a potential step before the actual replacement?
That's a good question. If, if you'll allow me to follow up on that and put it in the subsequent memo.
Well, I'd like to get rid of the silver maple, but, but again, I, I think it's, it's something I, I don't, I wasn't that involved with it. I don't know if it was five or six years ago. It was like two or three spots, and it seemed like the town did a lot of grinding at that time. I could be totally wrong.
Sure.
Dustin, I, I have a, a comment and a question. The comment is just about the opportunity for homeowners to use J.J. Newell for their driveway or other things. It can be real, at their own cost, but at the reduced or the sort of wholesale cost, I, I think is a real benefit. It can be very hard just to find a provider who's available to do driveway replacements. They're mostly focused on new construction, and so that in itself is a benefit, and they, it can be quite expensive. My question was, can you, can you give a, I have never had my sidewalks replaced. Is it possible to give like an average or a range of what a typical homeowner might, what their cost might be to replace sidewalks? That, you know, but like the ones that would fall into the worst category that would be required?
Oh, jeez. Is, uh, Jill still here? Yeah, could you, Jill? I'm gonna phone a friend.
All right.
She, she has the commodity prices memorized.
So, a typical sidewalk square is five by five feet, so that's twenty-five square feet. And our price with J.J. Newell is right around eight dollars. I think it's seven dollars and ninety cents for a regular sidewalk square, and eight dollars and ten cents for a square that goes over a driveway, because we made them thicker there, because the cars are driving off of them. So, eight dollars, twenty-five square feet is two hundred dollars a square. So.
And then the, the, the resi- the resident would be responsible for half of that, roughly a hundred dollars per sidewalk square. Is that right?
Yep. My pen is out of ink.
Justin, I can answer, I can address the grinding.
Okay.
Sure.
So, Public Works was doing a lot of grinding. We're kind of trying to get away from that because it's not very aesthetic. I don't know how you feel about yours, but, you know, I mean, it exposes the aggregate, and it, it doesn't look as nice. So, we, and it, it doesn't necessarily fix the problem because it's, it's pushing up because of a root. Whereas if we can replace it, they, they hack away the root a little bit, and they can make it flat.
So, in fact, I just rated out my home and house as one, one of the worst offenders, and this is gonna happen. Okay.
Well, if you don't, if it's not a shirking hazard, then I won't worry about it.
We'll get, we'll get you, we'll, we'll get you a postcard.
Start budgeting. Thank you, Jill.
All right. Jill, I'm sorry to cut you off. Is there anything else you had?
No, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
We're good.
Okay.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Both yes, and President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five to zero.
There are no reports. That brings us, or, or proposal reports. Does anybody have a report they would like to share with us?
We're having, so, this is a joint work study, correct? Dustin, on Wednesday, the, this Wednesday, the seventeenth, with the Plan Commission and Town Council to discuss possible development. So, if that, there'll be a Zoom link for that, for anyone who wants to join.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to report that the Munster Civic Organs, Munster Civic Foundation Committee on July third and fourth met this last week. And it is our recommendation that the town have a Fourth of July parade. And we have fireworks on the third at Centennial Park. That as we plan these, we pay very close attention to the progression of rules coming from Indianapolis so that we can make sure that the citizens of the town and the participants are safe. Uh, this may mean changing the route of the parade, but not until we talk to people who we need to talk to, to make it longer so that the residents are spread out a little bit more. And maybe make a few ju- adjustments at the Centennial Park to keep people a little further apart from each other, if that's still a concern. Uh, but we'll be paying very close attention to both of those.
Thank you, Ken.
And the people I've talked, the citizens I've talked to are enthusiastic.
All right. Announcements, all town council meetings will be held at seven PM unless otherwise noted. There is no meeting on the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth. Brother Town Council meeting on April fifth. A meeting on the twelfth, April nineteenth, Town Council Development Commission meeting, no meeting on the twenty-sixth. That brings it down to adjournment.
So moved.
Right. I'll second Mr. Tulowitzki's move. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, for attending. I'll read away for you. I'd be more than happy to, since you want to leave by eight-thirties. All right. We are going to be moving into the Development Commission and Brother Meeting. I will bring that to order. Roll call, please, Wendy.
Commissioner Schoen?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Present, virtually.
And Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present.
And I see Mr. Castro, our liaison to the school board, is in the audience. Hi, Joe.
All right. Brings us down to open to the public. Is there anybody that wishes to speak at this meeting? Anybody online, Dustin?
No, sir.
I will close you open to the public. That brings us down to consent agenda. I will move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoen?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Yes. Both yes, and Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five to zero consent agenda.
There's nothing under old business, under new business. We have the Maple Leaf Crossing LLC, Fourth Amendment to the Development Agreement. I will move that we adopt the Fourth Amendment to the Development Agreement between the town of Munster and Maple Leaf Crossing. There are second.
I seconded.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoen?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Both yes, and Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
There is, there are no reports. There are no announcements. That brings us down to adjournment. Remove, will you adjourn? There are second.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is adjourned. Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
All right.
Perfect, man. Yeah. I was gonna say, don't zoom too fast.